We're starting.
All right. Is the recording started?
Yes.
Very good, very good. So this is the special city council meeting video and teleconference, September 16, 2020, at 1:45 PM, Wood Creek, Texas City Council. And I am going to call the meeting to order. And we will have just a moment of silent prayer for discernment and for wisdom as we proceed with our meeting today. And we will have the city secretary call the roll.
Mayor Gloria Whitehead.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Nancy Britner.
Here.
Councilmember Aurora LaBrune.
Here.
Councilmember Brent Polley.
Here.
Councilmember Bill Shield. It sounds like he's trying to sign in. City Hall is trying to get him to sign in. Councilmember Vicky Albert.
Here.
We want to wait a moment to see if he's in or go forward.
We have a forum.
We have a forum, so we'll go ahead and proceed. So we have public comments at this time. And on general matters, we have Mike Snyder, who would like to speak on the budget process. And so if Mr. Snyder is available, we'll have him speak in just a moment. And what I would like to do is go forward with proclamation and the consent agenda, and then go back and entertain those speakers who would like to speak in the public hearing on item six, and also those who would like to speak on the agenda, item seven. And so we'll go, in the interest of the time, since we need to start the public hearing on the budget at two, we would like to be certain to have the speakers have plenty of time, those that are speaking on item six and item seven. And no one else to speak on any other items other than Mike Snyder, who wants to speak at this time on the budget process. So if Mike is available, are you there, Mike?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Thank you very much for having me.
You have the floor. And we have a three-minute, a three-minute timing that we... Thank you.
Excuse me.
I just want to thank everybody for their time as council members. I know that you've put a lot of time. I've been in the meeting twice with the mayor where we spent over five hours. And I know it's not an easy job. I just would think that it's very important for me to mention in the budgeting process that we're all, you all are trying to make decisions all the time and represent different entrances and different people. But what I have heard through this process is that many people don't think they're being listened to. And I hope that all of you strive in your positions to listen to the people and get their opinions and so on. That's basically my only comments, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you, Mr. Snyder. We appreciate it.
Councilmember Shield has now joined the meeting, but we can't see him yet.
Councilmember Shield, we cannot see you yet, but we know you're in attendance. So we'll mark you here. Can you hear us? We'll proceed. I have two proclamations. And one proclamation is designating September 17 through the 23rd, 2020. It's Constitutional Week. And I'm going to hold up the proclamation just so you all can see the proclamation. We also have a photograph of it, so we'll have that for the record. And the proclamation is, whereas it is the privilege and duty of the American people to commemorate the 233rd anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America with appropriate ceremonies and activities. And whereas Public Law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week.
Now, I clicked the microphone, the microphone turned blue, so we're all ready.
I think that Bill Shield is there.
And Bill, we can hear you.
Finally. I'm too old to hear.
Therefore, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Wood Creek, the county of Hayes, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week. We urge all citizens to study the Constitution and reflect on the privilege of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities which that privilege involves. In witness whereof, I have hereby, too, set my hand and caused the seal of the city of Wood Creek to be affixed this ninth day of September, the year of our Lord, 2020. Again, this is the proclamation. And the second proclamation proclaims October 2020 as Hill Country Night Sky Month. And this is a very rather long whereas sections of the proclamation. And the, therefore, we're proclaiming by the city of Wood Creek, Texas, October 2020 shall hereafter be known as Hill Country Night Sky Month in Wood Creek, Texas. Wood Creek City Council encourages citizens to enjoy the night sky and to participate in the city of Wood Creek's and the Hill Country Region's events and programs celebrating the night sky and promoting the ways in which communities are working to preserve it. That the city of Wood Creek encourages citizens to learn about light pollution and why it matters, night sky-friendly lighting and lighting regulations, and to implement practices and lighting improvements that will reduce light pollution, thereby preserving our night skies. The Wood Creek mayor is hereby instructed to post this proclamation at City Hall for public display and enter this document into the permanent records of the city of Wood Creek. My proclamation for Mayor Whitehead, ma'am. So we have also a copy of this that will be affixed as declared. So we'll go to the agenda, consent agenda. And we have no public comments. Nancy, I'm recognizing you. Mayor Pro Tem Britner.
I move that we accept the consent agenda in its entirety.
Second. Vicky. Councilmember Albert, second. We'll have a roll vote.
Well, do we have discussion? Wait.
Oh, please. I'm sorry. Councilmember Polley.
Yeah, there's been a motion and a second. Do we not have just quick discussion on that?
Well, sure.
Yeah. Yeah. The only question I have is on the minutes for the, I guess it's the, was it the August 12th meeting? There was a report given by a traffic committee. I think that the minutes ought to reflect that report occurred, just to make it accurate.
Is the preliminary amendment?
Let me interject in there. That report was done during the budget workshop, which we do not record minutes during the budget workshop.
That's correct. Did you all hear that?
Say again. Basically, being since this is a workshop and no official action was taken, we do not record minutes in the workshop. And that report was in the workshop. Okay.
Is there any other discussion? Call the question. Clerk will call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tem Nancy Britner.
Yes.
Councilmember Aurora LaBrune.
Yes.
Councilmember Brent Polley.
Abstain.
Excuse me, excuse me. Councilmember Polley.
Yeah.
Would you state the reason for the abstention in a vote?
I don't, I don't think.
Go ahead.
I don't think the, okay. I don't think the August 12th minutes actually reflect what happened. I'm not sure of the explanation, but, so I'm not going to vote for it.
Well, there are two reasons to abstain for a vote. One is that you have some conflict of interest in that vote, or two, that you did not have enough information or have prepared for that vote.
Well, I can change the vote to no.
Abstention is only for those two reasons. It will be a no vote?
Yeah.
Yes, a no vote. Thank you very much. So we will move on to the regular agenda. Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry. Every, every has to vote.
Okay. Councilmember Bill Shield.
Yes.
Councilmember Vicky Albert.
Yes.
So the motion carries?
Yes.
And we have?
We have four yeses and one no.
Four yeses, one no for the record. So at about three minutes, I think we can go on and start this a little earlier. I cannot start the public hearing earlier.
No, it's ready to.
Okay. Ray Don Tilly, is he available?
Oh. Yes, he is.
Ray Don.
Let me add you to them.
Ray Don Tilly.
I'm sorry.
And how about Mike Snyder? Is Mike, is Mike still available?
No, Ray Don is.
Ray Don.
Can you hear me?
Yes, Ray Don, we have, we have a few minutes before we actually start the public hearing, which has to be precisely at two. So if you would like, I believe you asked to speak on item six. Would you like to speak on it now?
Actually, I have no comments on item six. All the comments are on item seven.
Okay, we'll come back to you on item seven then in just a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is Mike Snyder available?
Yes.
Mike Snyder, are you available?
Yes. Hello, ma'am, I'm here.
Yes, Mike, if you would like to speak on item six, on the budget, proposed budget, I believe you asked to speak on the public budget.
You want him in the public hearing?
Yeah, but we're going to start in about two minutes.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll hold just about.
Go ahead.
Mike, we'll wait, we have to wait two minutes.
One minute now.
One minute, yeah. So those of you who would like to speak on item six, if you're hearing me now, I have Mike Snyder and I have Ray Don Tilly. And if there are any others, we'll certainly entertain your comments, your public comments. And we'll open the public hearing in just a few moments and then have you all one.
Mayor could let the city secretary explain if they want to raise their hand.
Yes.
For the public here.
Right. So I'm going to have our city secretary explain when we convene the public hearing, and then we hear from the public comments how to do that. So Linda.
So if you were on a phone, then you push star two to raise your hand to speak. If you're on your computer, there's an icon on the bottom part of your computer to raise your hand to speak. So if the mayor can point them. And I think we're at two o'clock.
We're at two o'clock, and we are convening the public hearing on proposed budget for fiscal year 2020, 2021. And I will entertain public comments at this time. And Ray Don Tilly, would you like to go?
I'm sorry, I had Mike Snyder.
Oh, okay, well, we'll do Mike. We have Mike up already. We'll have Mike Snyder, please.
I really don't have any further comments. I appreciate the time given to me to state my opinion at different meetings. I just want to voice my appreciation. That's it.
Thank you. And Ray Don Tilly. You have the floor.
Hey, if you can hear me.
Yes, we can. You have the floor.
I do not have any comments on the budget. All of my comments, as I said, are for item seven.
Well, I'm just double checking. I've wanted that for the record.
Yeah, no problem.
Because we convened the hearing, so I wanted to make sure that we offered you that. Thank you. Do we have any other citizens who would like to speak at this time on item six in the public hearing on the proposed budget? There being no further comments on the public hearing, we'll terminate the hearing at 2:03. And then we'll proceed with our agenda, item seven. And before we start, I do want to take public comments and then have discussion with council. But before we go into that, I just wanted to make just a few comments about item seven, which is discussion and take appropriate action on an ordinance amending Title V Public Works, Chapter 50 Water Quality Ordinance of the City of Wood Creek Code of Ordinances as it relates to impervious cover. And the comments that I wanted to make on this is that, over many months, citizens have contacted the city hall regarding numbers of what they consider and what have been called onerous ordinances. Many people in our community have wanted swimming pools, but they've run up against impervious cover restrictions. And although some may have actually tried to come into City Hall and try to obtain a permit, many have just deterred because they truly just don't understand the process, and they were told that swimming pools were not allowed. So based on that kind of background information, during COVID shutdowns, we've all realized, and the community has realized, that we've had this increased stay-in and in-state safe order, but also that highlighted the need for recreation and for health activities. So there was this renewed interest in swimming pools and the issue of having the, a pool in their yard. That's some background. The city has permit requests currently and have received numerous calls that there are some permits in progress as we speak. Those oftentimes, the citizens, again, are deterred from filing because they believe that they're not allowed to have pools. So what we really intend by item seven and the discussion and the action on this issue of the impervious cover, what we truly have in mind, and what this intended to do was to begin a process to review Chapter 50 relating to impervious cover. And it's a long overdue review. So it's really timely now, not only from citizens' calls and citizens' requests, but because of the circumstances of our life these days, that it's timely to begin to review. And in light of the fact that if we don't have a review and we don't have a discussion and we don't get community input to this matter, many people are not going to be able to even proceed with the construction of a pool as it's so far out. You know, you have to really plan pretty far out with construction. It might be eight months, it might be a year. So people would be well into 2021 before they could really start any construction if the city allowed any changes that made that possible. So it's not something that has been one rushed in any way. There's been no interest in hurrying about anything on this app, on this. It's to begin a process that's very timely and very necessary. So what I'm asking or suggesting to council, and what this item was designed to start is the conversation. And that we begin by having a conversation. We consider referring this matter to our ordinance review group, our ordinance review committee. And I think we, also, I have another gentleman who wanted to talk on this, by the way. It's Nick Dornak, and he would like to speak on this item as well. I would like to suggest that if the council so proceeds, that the only action on this matter would be to refer and review to the ordinance review committee with a proposed 60-day return on a report and include Nick Dornak in that committee as the, I'm trying to think who he, his group. Again, the Meadows Center and, yeah, Cypress Creek Project and the Watershed Protection Plan. So we would want him, if he would so agree to serve on that ordinance review. So with that said, I'd like to proceed to take public comments on the matter. And who would like to be up first here? I think Ray Don, would you like to go?
You want Ray Don?
Ray Don, would you like to speak on this item?
There we are. Sure. Oh, that's all right.
Yes, we can, you have the floor.
Whatever this council decides today and whatever I may say, our Trinity Aquifer has its own agenda. The carst, its carst council is limestone riddled with faults and fissures and caves and creatures down to microscopic scale. The aquifer is alive and set by creeks and rivers entangled with its mysterious waterways coursing below in porous rock. It is not some bucket that gathers rain and holds it for us to use whenever and however much we want. That's the sticking point. Swimming pools would not be a problem on Wood Creek's agenda if not for the aquifer. Looking up from the aquifer's point of view, a pool is a big concrete pancake that prevents infiltration into the soil below. By definition, absolutely, without doubt, 100% impervious cover. Other jurisdictions may reduce that number, but those are arbitrary fictions concocted to make pools easier and cheaper to install. But that's not all. A swimming pool needs water, which comes from the aquifer now choked by impervious cover. Filling a pool takes six months.
Ray Don, we lost you. Can you come back on?
He's unmuted here.
Well, I think we've, we've lost Ray Don. If we get him back, we'll let him finish his comments, give him an opportunity to do that. We also have Nick Dornak. Is he on the line?
Yes. Hold on just a second.
Am I spelling, pronouncing his name correctly? I'll just call him Nick.
I'm sorry, it's kind of Joseph.
Okay.
Okay, this is Nick Dornak. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you, Nick. We appreciate it. You can go ahead. You have the floor.
Absolutely. My name's Nick Dornak. I'm Director of Watershed Services at the Center. For those of you that I, I don't know, it's, it's good to see you. I haven't been to a Wood Creek council meeting in a while. I oversee the Cypress Protection Plan implementation, and I want to thank Wood Creek for their partnership and commitment to that watershed protection plan. I wanted to, I guess I'm going to take this opportunity to say thank you to Mayor Whitehead. I appreciate your comments and think that that is an excellent road forward on this particular issue. And I would love to work on that ordinance review committee on this issue. A couple of comments with regard to the number and the, the process behind swimming pools being counted or not, the countervious cover. The Edwards Aquifer, a lot, it does not allow imperv credit for, for construction that does not allow any kind of infiltration into the surface. And I did speak with Belinda a little bit yesterday, and I think that there might be an appropriate number in there based in science on what type of credit that we could give swimming pools. But I felt that 50% seemed somewhat arbitrary and lacked scientific backing. So I would love to participate and to really quantify the impacts of swimming pools from a supply side as well as a stormwater management side. And we, what we are, in the Cypress Creek watershed in the city of Wood Creek, is a clean, clear, and flowing, generations to come. That means flow from Jacob's Well, that means protection from non-point. One of the just tremendous actions that has taken place over the last number of years was the rewrite of the city of Wood Creek and city of Wimberly Water Quality Ordinances that passed early year to ensure that in 2050 would have the same water quality impacts that we're seeing from development today. That is profound, that's historic, and that is substantial. And I commend each of you for honoring that and encouraging that in your community through this process. So with that said, I also recommend be referred to further discussion and analysis, and the Meadows Center and the Cypress Creek Project would be delighted to work with you in that process. So thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate your agreement to work with the ordinance review group. That's wonderful. Thank you. We also have Amber. Who do we have next? Louis, yeah. We have Amber Lewis, who would like to speak. So you have the floor, Ms. Lewis. If she is on.
Good afternoon, mayor and city council members. Can you hear me?
Yes, very well.
Yes, very well. Little strange being on this side of the, of the conversation. I'm used to being on screen and, and running the meeting. Thank you for your time today. My name is Amber Lewis, and I live at 20 Wilson Circle in Wood Creek. First, I want to thank you all for your service to the city of Wood Creek. You all give countless hours of your time and talent to the community, and we are all better for it. I'm requesting that the city council employ the proper process to consider amending the city's code of ordinances, impervious cover as it relates to swimming pool water surface area. Please note that I'm not asking for a change to include the apron of the pool surrounding patio or decking. In other municipalities in the Hill Country, only a percentage of the pool's surface area counts toward impervious cover. For instance, in Austin, which is also over the Edwards Aquifer, they only, they count 0% of the pool. Rollingwood, which is where I work, also over the Edwards Aquifer, they count 0% of the pool. Georgetown is 50%, Wimberly is 100%, and as you all know, Wood Creek is 100%. While I recognize that a pool does prevent the infiltration of water into the aquifer, a pool also acts as a rainwater collection system. At least one inch, if not more, of the pool is available to catch rainwater and other stormwater draining on the property. Not only should impervious cover restrictions serve to ensure recharge of the aquifer, they should also work to protect neighboring property owners from adverse impacts from flooding. Wood Creek does not have any regional drainage system. Wood Creek does not have any regional drainage system or infrastructure. So any little action we can take to collect stormwater on our own property should be employed to help our neighbors. And I think the way the ordinance is written is flawed because it has a singular focus on the recharge of the aquifer and should be amended to consider stormwater impacts as well. I know I'm not alone in my wish to amend this regulation. I have spoken with a handful of neighbors who would love to put in a pool but are up against the impervious cover restrictions. And as Mayor Whitehead pointed out, while in the middle of this pandemic, more residents are looking for ways to enjoy their homes and pools are, are an amenity that can serve this purpose. Again, I just want to put in full disclosure that my husband is Brenton and the city manager. He adheres fully to the ICMA Code of Ethics and pursuant to that end, he will remain completely neutral in this discussion. In fact, he doesn't even want this pool. So I'm, I'm alone here, um, asking for the pool. Um, I, to this point, I'm saddened by some of the rhetoric and misinformation that has happened around this request. I'm a citizen of Wood Creek, I'm a voter, and I pay property taxes. The idea that I shouldn't have a voice because of my husband's position smells nothing of nothing but voter suppression. Thank you so much for your consideration of my request. I believe this request is a smart way to honor the aquifer, address flooding, and to promote the wonderful quality of life we all enjoy in Wood Creek.
Thank you. Are there any other?
You want to try and, Mr. Tilly again?
Yes, I would like to try it to see if Ray Don Tilly is still available and allow you the time to speak because we did lose your volume. Ray Don, are you available?
Can you hear me?
Ray Don, are you there?
I am here.
Fine, we would like to just offer you the opportunity to speak in your full three minutes because you've got, we lost you.
Yeah, no, that's, that's no problem.
Okay.
Yeah, let me just pick up where I was because of course, three minutes goes quickly. And so as you are well aware, I go ahead and write out my comments ahead of time. So I'll share the whole comments, but I mean, it's wonderful that you're going to have Nick on the committee. I think that's a great, I can't think of anyone better than Nick to be involved. So that's a great step forward. You know, some things about pools. It, it stated that they can act as a rainwater and stormwater detention area. Detention areas gather and hold rainfall and storm flows so as to protect water and water, uh, property and waterways down slope. But to serve detention, really to serve detention, a pool would have to be empty and receive water and act more like a rainwater storage thing than a pool. So I'm glad, like I said, that we're going to be looking at this further. It also has, because of the impermeability and runoff pollution from its chemicals and its salts is, is a problem. I mean, I feel like we need to listen to the aquifer because in summer, we already have groundwater depletion. Sprinklers cause our water levels to spike down. You know, one pool may not tip the balance, but revising an ordinance is really like, you know, taking water out of Cypress Creek, sucking it dry. The aquifer is already in a net negative long-term trend. So once it's depleted, the water really is gone. And you know, then you have to ask yourself what we say to the golfers and to the local economy that's supported by visitors to Jacob's Well and Blue Hole because they depend on the aquifer. So in summary, judgment, discernment, consideration, take time. You have time. Pool season is over. Comprehensive planning is underway. So as it sounds like you're suggesting, my suggestion was to table the motion today and integrate the Cypress Creek Watershed Protection Plan, Jacob's Well Groundwater Management Zone into the public process. Because you know, we can't see the aquifer, but we can see our fellow citizens and people deserve a voice. Council has a winning opportunity today and it sounds like you will indeed step sidestep disaster. So water management can support economic development and long-term sustainability for Wood Creek. So in good faith, I offer my support too, to any extent that I can toward a partnership, toward true water stewardship that the city can promote as a model for the watershed and the hill country. Thanks.
Great. Thank you, Ray Don. We appreciate the comment.
We have Ms. Brizendine, Ms. Ray Sturham.
Okay. Ms. Brizendine, are you on? Did you wish?
Yes, please.
You have the floor.
Thank you. I would just like to make one comment, Mayor. When I first, can you hear me?
Yes, you have the floor.
Okay. When I first moved to this city, I, and I got on city council, I noticed that rainwater collection vessels were a part of the impervious cover. And I worked hard to get that changed because in reality, it's a collection vessel, much like a pool is a collection vessel. We cannot penalize people for wanting to collect water. And not that I'm in total agreement that a pool, an arbitrary number of 50% is correct. I'm in agreement with Nick that there needs to be some kind of scientific calculation and calibration on that. However, I do think we need to open our minds and understand that runoff is as much an issue out here and flooding our neighbors and destroying our streets as is the aquifer. So I would like for y'all to consider that a rainwater collection vessel was at one time considered part of the impervious cover and that changed. So we need to be open to change. Thank you.
Thank you. City Secretary, is there anyone else in queue who would like to speak?
There's not.
We show no one else, no one else at this time. So I do need to entertain a motion. Mayor Pro Tim Britner. We can't hear you. Just a minute. Has she unmuted?
I'm unmuted.
Very good. You have the floor.
After hearing all of the comments and talking to other people about this prior to this meeting, I believe it's in our best interest to use your suggestion and give this to the ordinance review committee so that they can do proper research. And working with Nick, I think is, is outstanding, which would help us better understand a lot of our impervious cover ordinances that we are a little confused about. I think some of our citizens are, I, I know that it can get really confusing. So therefore, I move that we send this to the ordinance review committee to get back to us in 60 days.
Do we have a second? Councilmember Alvor, second. And we'll open for discussion.
Hello.
Thank you, Bill.
Okay. Yeah, I certainly support this. I, I was a little surprised to find it on the agenda in like finished form. And I thought, wait a minute, wait a minute. Where are we going with this? We have over the last 10 years, to my knowledge, talked about impervious cover. I don't know, five times, six times, we've changed the ordinance three times. You know, let's take our time. I don't know, even 60 days is not magic. Let's take our time to do this right, do the research, talk to people. I'm a, I'm a big picture guy. I have not heard Hayes Trinity Groundwater Control District mentioned in this, for example. I mean, there's a sort of an issue, should we have pools at all? I mean, whether they retain water or don't retain water, they use water. Isn't rain, just rainwater in the pool, you have to pump water out of the aquifer to fill the pool and to keep it full. And so let's take, I'll take our time and really look at the big picture here. What should we have? And you know, we have changed our impervious cover from allowable impervious cover from 25 to 35%. We've done it for the builders. Now we want to do it for a few people who may want a swimming pool. Let's not be rushed into a hasty decision that two years from now, council's going to have to say, oh, we shouldn't have done that. Let's get real and do something else. So I support postponing this. I'm, and I'm not sure 60 days is enough.
Councilmember Pulli.
I feel like on fourth credit every time I have to do that, but anyway, it works, I suppose. I support what Bill says. I think, you know, if there really is a need for this, I'm a little surprised why this is sort of to the top of the, in terms of things, but yeah, let's slow down, let's do it right. I like the fact Nick's involved in it. That gives us some credibility. I would also suggest, you know, we just went through a extensive review process on this ordinance, which is critical to the health of Cypress Creek, Jacob's Well and whatnot. We had engineers that worked on that and they presented this new updated package to us that we approved. Beyond Nick, and maybe Nick can answer this, but should we have some of those engineering consultants involved as well? Because they were involved in, you know, updating this ordinance to begin with. And this is a crucial thing. We don't want to fool around with it. So my suggestion would be, but depending on what Nick says, it, would it help to have one of those engineering consultants involved as well? Because a lot of this does involve, you know, flow calculations and, you know, percolation and, you know, things that I don't have a clue about. So that would be my suggestion and it'd be interesting to see what, what Nick thinks about that.
Is Nick wanting to speak? Nick, if you would like to speak, we see your hand is up. Is he on?
Okay.
Yes.
Great. I, I appreciate Councilmember Pulli's idea and the answer to that is, I believe, yes, that we can incorporate, probably Tom Hegemeyer, who helped out, really helped redraft that water quality ordinance to participate in this. The Wimberly Valley has been doing a tremendous work in terms of setting the example for, for other communities in the hill country with the new school, the new library, this is the groundwater management zone, a, a real in-depth look at swimming pools and how those are affect runoff and recharge would be just keeping with the great leadership of this, of, of Wood Creek and the Wimberly Valley community. So I, I would be, I, I believe that we can definitely get some extra engineering help on this.
That, that sounds excellent. Thank you. Are there any other council members or any other citizens who would like to speak at this time in this discussion? Is there any other discussion? Councilmember LeBrew.
Okay. I think I have indicated that I do not have an opposition to the change for the, to reviewing the ordinance for the swimming pools. On the review by the ordinance review committee, is it going to be limited to this particular issue or are they going to go look at impervious cover as a whole?
Nancy, how did you plan that motion?
I'm sorry?
Your motion, was it to review just the swimming pool provision or the entire ordinance?
It was.
We were talking about, we were talking about seven under the, under the agenda item titled five. Chapter 50, Water Quality Ordinance of the City of Wood Creek.
I know, I didn't.
Impervious cover. So it was just impervious cover. Chapter.
Can Linda read it back?
Yes.
Discussion and take appropriate action on an ordinance amending Title V, Public Works, Chapter 50, Water Quality Ordinance of the City of Wood Creek Code of Ordinances as it relates to impervious cover. And what Mayor Pro Tim Britner said was to send this to the ordinance review committee to get back to city council within 60 days.
There you go.
Nancy, would, would you accept an amendment to, you know, let's limit this to the pool issue? Let's don't reopen this whole thing again that we just went through this. And also give some consideration to Nick's idea that perhaps we involve Tom Hegemeyer or, you know, some sort of consultant.
Yes, Tom was very instrumental in, in rewriting the water quality ordinance last year along with Rick and whoever was with Meadows, I think at that time. I don't know that Nick was there at that time. I have no problem accepting a friendly amendment to that towards just to the pool.
Plus the engineers or engineer.
I need a second for that, I believe.
I'll second. You can't second your own amendment.
Who's second? Bill did. Councilmember Shields second.
You can't second your own amendment, Brent.
That's why I kind of ignored him. Okay. So we have a motion, we have an amendment sec, properly seconded. And do we have any discussion further on that item? And there being none, we will call the question and we'll have a roll call vote. And every, does anyone need it read back or do you understand? Everyone?
Please. I'm sorry, I, I had a package pick up.
Do you need it read back?
Give it to him. So could I read back, please?
Yes, well, Linda will read back.
So Mayor Pro Tim Britner asked to send this as an item to the ordinance review committee to get back to city council within 60 days. There is a friendly amendment to suggest limiting the impervious cover discussion to the pool issue and include engineering consultation through the medicine.
Will proceed with the roll call vote. City Secretaries.
Sorry, is busy writing.
Yes, that's good.
Mayor Pro Tim Britner?
Yes.
Councilmember LeBrew?
Yes.
Councilmember Pulli?
Yes.
Councilmember Shield?
Yes.
Councilmember Alver?
Yes.
And the motion amended carries. Thank you. May I just make one comment? And that's on the idea of 60 days. I kind of agree with council members not to rush, but just setting some time for them to come back and again, have more input back to council on the progress would be kind of my thought. And then of course, we would want to have time for input again from citizens. And so a future agenda item that looks very similar to this may appear if that's still in agreement with council's wishes. Or there, is there any other business? There being no other business, we are in adjournment. Thank you.
Thank you.